Did you write on your agenda the, the meeting to Pearl? For fifteen M?
Uh, no.
Is she okay with that?
She's good with that. They're not good with that amendment. Jo, uh, Ronnie wants to.
Um, are there any special intentions? Uh, I would just like to say, um, that I'm praying for the newly, uh, the new class of Kenner police, that we were their class twenty. We went to the graduation this morning and it was very nice. Um, and I would just want you all to lift them up in your prayers as they start, uh, on the streets to serve the community and do their best and protect them. Okay, if everyone can stand, I invite Reverend Clay to lead us in the prayer.
Good morning. God bless you. This is the day that the Lord has made, and we shall rejoice and we will be glad in it. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, it is in profound reverence that we bow to your holy and your righteous name, with the realization that you are God, and beside thee there is no other God. We thank you this morning for your loving kindness and your tender mercies. And it is because of your mercy that we are not destroyed, and your compassion never fails. For you give us new mercies and new grace every morning, and great is thy faithfulness. You said you will be our sun and our shield, and that you will give us grace and glory and no good thing will you withhold from us. I thank you this morning for this great city of Kenner. We pray for the mayor, we pray for the chief of police, the council, and all of the appointed servants that you have blessed us with. We ask for grace for them, and wisdom, and more wisdom for them, as they deliberate the issues confronting the citizens of this city, and with good intentions and the best of intention, let them serve this city well. We thank you for the blessings and the favor and the peace that you have conferred upon them. We pray for an atmosphere of warm-heartedness and good intentions. It is in the most precious and powerful and perfect name of the awesome God we serve. Amen. Amen.
Chief Conley, I'd like to ask you to lead us in the pledge.
Sure, thank you. Place your hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chairman, we have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. We have correspondence, reports from the mayor, C A O, or department heads. Mayor Glazer?
Thank you. Uh, just to go over some tax information, as we normally do at one of these meetings a month. Citywide sales tax revenues for October were up thirty point three five percent, which amounts to nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. For current fiscal year, we are up nineteen point eight four percent, which is two million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-four cents compared to this time last year. And I just asked Liz, how did it compare to prior COVID? And they were trending, still trending upward as we were before COVID. So, and not to step on Chief Conley's toes, fifteen E and F money coming from Senator Talbot for body cameras, and fifteen F is from Representative Vileo for computer-related stuff, and I'd like just to publicly thank him. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of amendments, the regular council meeting of October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item two A is a resolution grant and alcoholic beverage permit to Friends of Rivertown Incorporated on November sixth, two thousand and twenty-two at Lake Town Parking Lot, being property owned by the city of Kenner. Item two B is a resolution grant and alcoholic beverage permit to Friends of Rivertown Incorporated on December third, two thousand and twenty-two at two thousand and fifteen Fourth Street, Kenner Heritage Park, being property owned by the city of Kenner. Item two C is a resolution grant and alcoholic beverage permit to the Friends of Rivertown Incorporated on December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two at two thousand and fifteen Fourth Street, Kenner Heritage Park, being property owned by the city of Kenner. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item three A is application number twenty-two ninety-eight dash twenty-two, Down Syndrome Association of Greater New Orleans, to hold a public gathering on October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, from six AM to two PM, for the purpose of a festival and walk at Lake Town. Item three B is application number twenty-three oh-one dash twenty-two, Hope Holloway, to hold a public gathering on October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, from five PM to nine PM, for the purpose of a Halloween community gathering at four oh-nine Morey Street. Item three C is application number twenty-three hundred dash twenty-two, Holly Heights Civic Association, to hold a public gathering on October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, from four PM to seven PM, for the purpose of a fall fest, Megas Park, at sixty-seven Barron Lane in Kenner, Louisiana. That will conclude the consent agenda.
Thank you. Um, a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
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 Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings for final passage. Item eight A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seventy, in order to amending the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, to establish funding in various departments and to defund positions and eliminate various departments.
A motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to open the public hearing. All, councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes seven zero. We're now in a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to address the council, please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Greg Taft. I live at thirty-seven twenty West Laola Drive. Uh, I, I want to bring up two things that's regarding this, uh, particular ordinance. And both of them's going to deal with the fire department, which is the pages two oh-two to two twelve. And my first concern is, and what I like to do is ask, when I, when I'm done, have the chief tell the council and the residents of Kenner whether or not, how, or how this will impact them, and whether or not that what we're eliminating here is something that actually saves lives. Because from what I can see, we want to do away with the EMT dash B, which I thought was very important, because I, I thought it would benefit both K P D as long, and the citizens, and the fire department, and then the paramedic portion that's being defunded. To me, that's another problem, because when things happen, and, and I hope that Chief Conley will step in on this as well, but when someone is shot, I think we're talking about maybe minutes before it becomes death, or if it's a fire, if, and, and something falls and hits them, or they get seriously burned, it takes minutes to, to apply certain steps in order to keep that person alive, to be able to go to the hospital. And I don't think we got time for Jefferson Parish or St. Charles Parish to send their medics here, or their EMTs here to help us, when we already had it in the budget to have the positions. And again, I want, I would like the input from Chief Morris and Chief Conley, because to me, they're the, they're the ones on the front line, and you may, and the council just may look at it as dollars and cents. I'm looking at it as people's lives, and if they tell me, it won't make a difference. That's one thing. But I don't think that, I, I, I just find it hard to believe that that's what they would tell me. But anyway, I'm gonna leave that up to them. But this is how I feel about it, and I think these should not be defunded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taft.
Yes.
I said, thank you. Um, is there anyone else that would like to speak or have any Mr. Morella, you have three minutes.
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Laola Drive, fifth district, fifty years. Uh, I agree with, uh, Mr. Taft, what he just had to say. Uh, I'd like to hear from the, uh, police chief. I'd like to hear from the fire chief. And if this is gonna be detrimental to these departments and to the citizens of Kenner, I will oppose this ordinance. But I need to hear from them first. I want to hear some detail on this ordinance. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Any additional comments from the audience? Okay.
I'll, I'll make a couple of comments on, on the, these positions don't exist today. It would be creating positions, uh, as sprint units. Uh, there was talk about, and the fire chief in the past wanted to try to get a, a, an older type ambulance to, to station in a firehouse, uh, for immediate needs if there's not one available. But we have plans in the making now to correct some of the problems we have with the, the ambulance service, which is all over the country with, with the lack of employees to man these things. So you won't see any different level of service that you have now. These were positions that the fire chief had, had requested, and in the, the budget that we inherited. Uh, and we don't have many paramedics in the fire service now. We did just, uh, enter into an agreement with Discovery School and some local hospitals to actually start an E M R class, and eventually get some E M Ts. So these positions aren't, uh, they were funded, but they never filled in the, the current budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Glazer. Any additional comments? Would, any comments from the fire chief or the chief of police?
I would just say, I concur with the mayor, but I do know that in our units and the, the fire apparatus, there's, uh, they're all qualified in, in first aid. They do have chest seals, tourniquets, um, the, the fibrillators, uh, they, they're used often. Uh, the fire department and police department are usually there way before any kind of medical roles or certainly any kind of paramedic can make their role there. The, you know, that industry in itself is suffering from, uh, shortage. But, uh, you know, I, I, I think that, that the equipment we have onboard on, and our roll in stock, um, is sufficient until the, the plan of the city, um, makes out with works.
Thank you, Chief. Fire chief?
As, uh, the mayor stated, we currently don't have EMTs. We're not, we don't operate at the EMT level, basic or paramedic. We, uh, operate at the E M R level. We identified problems the, last year that was occurring with, uh, the shortage of first responders. Overall, the police has a shortage, EMTs have a shortage, and the fire department, for the first time in history, is starting to experience shortages on able, being able to recruit and retain personnel. So we wanted to provide, uh, a higher level of care to the community by having EMT basics and paramedics on the unit to deliver that high level of care until an ambulance became available. We had talked about getting, uh, emergency sprint units, because we had, uh, instances where firefighters had medical emergencies after coming out of, uh, incident, and the police department here had, uh, emergency with one of their personnel where there was no ambulance available. So we would have something available to treat the first responders primarily, and in those critical cases that we are called on, where we could transport citizens if need be in an emergency. So that's what was, uh, funded and requested last budget. Um, and this administration, during working through the budget process this time, has, has assured me that we're gonna build that. We started a relationship, as the mayor spoke to, we signed an agreement with, uh, Kenner Discovery, to start training them as EMTs and, uh, to help build up the sort of, uh, employment chain with that. And if we could start them in high school, becoming EMTs, and recruit them into the, the first responder service while they go into college or whatever, maybe make it a long-term profession for these individuals, for these students, then we'd like to see that happen. And that's the agreement, where we are in the process with it now, as far as developing the EMTs. It wasn't part of the, the service at the time the request was made, but we're still making steps forward to get to that level.
Great. Thank you, Chief Morris.
Can I add on just one more thing?
Yes, Mayor Glazer.
And also, since it, it wasn't a functioning, two functioning positions, EMTs or the paramedics, uh, throwing it in without even doing any kind of insurance review, does our city insurance cover these guys if they start increasing their medical, uh, level of care? I know it's under emergency and it, they, you know, we, we provide the care, but then you, you have to start up with the malpractice stuff and things like that, that it needs to be thought out a lot more than just creating these positions. You gotta take into account everything in the background that the city has to be covered with. Uh, not saying that it, it, it isn't needed, and it may be addressed later, but we have a plan in place that should correct some of the immediate problems in, in the near future.
Thank you, Mayor Glazer.
And also, if we, on fire, I might as well say, if you see, there was in, a pay adjustment, an increase of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars put, put in the fire budget to cure decades, I would say decades, many, many years of, of promotional pay discrepancies. There's a state law that says you get certain percentages when you're promoted from firefighter to, I think it's driver cap, that each one has it. The city, for whatever reason, pays them a dollar sixteen cents an hour, which doesn't make any rhyme or reason with the state law. So, fire has a lot of issues in pay, and this year's budget can't handle all the, the problems and correcting fire budget in one budget cycle. So we've decided to start somewhere, and we started with the people that it would affect, that have already been promoted, uh, and correct their pay and promotional pay. And it, we've estimated that it's gonna come out to be three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Somewhere, that's not the exact amount, but, because every day it changes, you know, with the, every, every payroll cycle. So that's what that was.
Thank you. Yes. Councilman Wilmot?
And I just wanted to inquire as to whether or not we still have a medical advisor. Would you know that, chief? And if so, what's his role?
Do we have, I'm sorry?
A medical advisor? Didn't we have a medical?
Yeah, we have a medical director that's under contract, uh, with us, uh, Dr. Maladu, who's a ER physician at E J. He's also the medical director for East Jefferson, uh, ambulance service. He, uh, is the one who we operate under and train under his license, uh, if a lot of citizens know this. Uh, we started making some non-emergent medical calls that was tying, tying up the fire apparatus that we started to get, be able to get the patient refusals from people who just needed help getting from the bed or falling out of bed and stuff like that. Those non-emergent calls that we were getting and were waiting for ambulances to come to, to help, uh, relieve some of the pressure on the service overall. So we, we operate in that capacity under his license. Also, we have to do, we have to have him in place to even start the EMT training. So that's why we, we brought him onboard to, to try to take some of the strain off the system overall.
Real good. So that system's still in place?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, motion by Councilwoman McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay. Now, we have, um, motion by Councilwoman McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to approve. I know we have some amendments.
We just left the court with the amendments. First and the debate, the clerk has received a request to amend, um, the attached, to remove a ten percent increase to the Director of Civil Services salary and reduce the civil service, uh, budget by ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. I have a motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment as the clerk has read? Seeing none. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes seven zero to amend. The next amendment the clerk has received is amending the budget by funding the chief of fire prevention and removing the fire prevention slash investigation position, which increases the budget by forty-three thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars. I have a motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment as the clerk has read into the record?
Councilmember Schworth?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, the chief of investigations and chief of inspections there, he's been doing a great job, and, uh, we don't need to defund that position. We need to leave Keith Crimmins in that position itself. Um, I don't know if it's going to increase the budget, because we're already painting that salary as of now. So I don't know about adding more funds that we need to, to position, but Keith's been doing a great job, and I think he ought to remain the chief of inspections. Thank you.
If I can, and so it is a slight increase, just because we had originally decreased it. So to do the amendment, you're gonna add back in the difference of his pay.
It's gonna be net zero.
It'll go back to what was originally voted and adopted.
Got you. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, councilmembers, please vote. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. The clerk has received the third amendment. The amendment would be to defund the deputy chief of fire position, which will reduce the fire department's budget by a hundred and fifty-six thousand and ninety-three dollars. That is at the request of motion by Councilmember Schworth, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Any discussion on the amendment as the clerk has read?
Um, councilmember Schworth?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, for fifty years, we have not had a deputy chief's position. I don't see why we need to add one now. It's money that we could save. Um, chief in your own words, that when fire means to, the fireman needs to step up, they'll step up. I understand it means that you won't have an assistant or someone underneath you. So we may have to ask you to do a little bit more right now with less. But that's what, the same thing with all the other positions and with all the other departments within the city, to ask them to do the same thing, to try to do more with less. I appreciate it, but as a member retired from the Kenner Fire Department, who've never had a deputy position before, I don't believe we, we need one now. Thank you.
Mayor Glazer?
Well, every other department in the city has a deputy director. Uh, I think this is needed. It will, it's, it's already a position created in state law, just hasn't been a deputy director here in the city of Kenner. We have fire chiefs over administration, fire over chiefs over prevention, so there is a need for, to consolidate under, under a deputy chief of police who have authority over the whole fire department. For fifty years, the fire department administration has been a debacle. For 50 years, the fire department administration has been a debacle, if you ask me, looking on the outside. This is since 2017, this is the fire department trying to get these positions in place, fire chiefs. This is from the Civil Service Board, we spent a ton of money, a ton of time and effort on trying to get fire right. So it's, it's been for the last so many years, it has nothing to do with the men and women of the fire department, has nothing to do with this current chief, chiefs before, it's just the way the fire department runs. I do believe that the fire chief has some administrative duties that handle, that a deputy fire chief would be able to handle. I was a deputy chief of police and handled the day-to-day operations of the police department when the police chief does everything else. I do believe that it's needed for the day-to-day operations of a fire department. I know there's assistant chiefs on each platoon, there's district chiefs, and they, if you look at all the stuff that happens in firehouses and in fire administration, I do believe that one overall deputy fire chief overseeing all of these positions on a day-to-day basis is needed and can actually make a difference. Like I said, we picking at the apple, these things, trying to get pay correct, like, for us to correct all fire, look, I've met with the Fire Association president, I've met with fire retired people, spoke to you a little bit about it, and it would cost about $3 million for us to right the ship in fire pay as we sit today. So when we start trying to, I guess, right the wrongs that have been going on for years, I think this is direly needed within the fire service. It's not going to increase the fire budget because they have a, we're defunding other positions, so it's not that big of a money issue. I do think that the oversight and the day-to-day operations of a fire department would go a long way, plus it's a promotional class, it's not a competitive class. It has to come within the Kenner Fire Department. So it won't be someone that's eligible to come from outside of a, outside the fire service now. So, and it won't be immediate because it has, there's steps that would have to take place with the Civil Service Board to create the position. So that's why I think it's needed, and I would hope that y'all would leave the deputy fire chief in his budget.
Thank you, Mayor Glazer. Fire Chief Morris?
Yeah, with all due respect to Councilman, when he was part of this department years ago, I think they had 60 people on duty, and it was ran, as the Mayor Glazer has alluded to, it wasn't the best ran department when we came in. Those positions are administrative positions that, with all the requirements that are required by professional fire departments to manage those day-to-day operations, not just the day-to-day operations. All of the information that we have to pass to the state and federal government and to the Insurance Rating Institute, that's a lot of documentation that needs to be handled across three different platoons. You lose that connectivity if you lose that single person that's managing those day-to-day operations of the department. So whatever happened 12 years ago, it's not the same department that we have today. We have over 120 people in this department now, and it's like the mayor said, every department has a deputy, and this deputy spot is needed in the department.
Thank you, Chief Morris. Does anyone else have any additional comments? Yes, Mr. Councilman Swarth?
Chief, I understand that, yes, the department has increased, but there's still nine chiefs, you're counting 10. Those fire positions that was added were firefighters. Those are now handled by the captains, no more chiefs. The chiefs still do their duties, north side, south side, and the assistant chief, okay? By adding more people, you've added the burden on the captain, not on the chief, okay? I understand that. I know tax and strategies have all changed, but that's not what this position is. I know we got paperwork that needs to be done, okay? That has never changed again. Even when I ran or was, money was in the hat for the fire chief's position, I understood that the duties are the fire chief, okay? Mr. Mayor, I sure understand what you're saying too, okay? I know there are problems, there are big problems that need to be corrected. The deputy position, I don't know if that's going to fix it, but they could be a start, but I don't know. We need to change civil service, we need to know, to change the way the position is added in. Right now, as promotional, you're choosing from three people. And if two people are already dropped, now you're choosing from one person. If that person may or may not be qualified for the position. Maybe if you want to hold off on the position till the 23, 24 budget, I'm all for that. But for right now, I don't think that we need a deputy position. That's my stance. Thank you.
Any additional comments?
Let me, um...
Yes, yes, Fire Chief Morris?
Wanted our daily assistant chiefs to come up and explain to council what that position does for him on a day-to-day basis.
Yes.
Ben Yocum, Assistant Chief, April 2. I guess I really more have more questions than answers right now. So we're defunding the Chief of Administration, correct? And now, although we never had a deputy chief, we're trying to wipe that out too. So who's going to do all the work that Ryan's been doing for years? Who's going to do all that work? Ronnie, this is not the same department, it's not. I'm behind that computer 10 to 12 hours a day, every shift. It's different. Everything's changed. To me, I'm still on the front line, we need both positions filled. That's my personal opinion, we're 29 years of service.
Ben, you and I go back a long ways, man.
Yes, sir.
I mean, a long ways, you know? I just think that now is not the right time, okay? Now is not the right time to get the position there, to do the promotional test right now. We need to change a whole lot of things, okay? I'm not saying that in the 23, 24 budget, I may be all for it once we get a better handle on it, okay? But as things are right now, we don't need it, okay? Just give me, just give us a while on this, let's get things all squared away first, okay? With civil service. Then once that's taken care of, then we can revisit it, and then we can do it, look at it again, all right?
I will politely and respectfully disagree with you. To me, both positions need to be funded. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anyone else, any comments from the community? Okay.
We've closed our hearing, so...
Okay, yes.
Just as a point of clarification, Councilman, if I could please reread the amendment into the record for the councilmembers? The amendment would be to defund the Deputy Chief of Fire position, which will reduce the fire department's budget by $156,093. Point of clarification. Is there any more discussion on the amendment as the clerk has read? All councilmembers in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All councilmembers opposed to the amendment, please say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails, one, six. Councilmembers Dunn, Lahatt, McKinney, Willmont, Branigan, and Brennan are opposed. Item 8B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,086, an ordinance amending the 2017, 2018 capital budget to reallocate $86,538 from funds received for KTV studio equipment with Tricaster to provide funding for the Department of Communications. Yes, ma'am?
Just a point of order, I don't believe that we voted on the overall budget amendment with the amendments.
You are correct. Back to your motion as amended, to approve as amended, I have a motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to approve as amended, item 8A on the agenda. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes, seven zero. Sorry about that. Item 8B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,086, an ordinance amending the 2017, 2018 capital budget to reallocate $86,538 from funds received for the KTV studio equipment with Tricaster to provide funding for the Department of Communications.
Motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Swarth, to open public hearing. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Any members of the public? Mr. Taffey of 3 minutes.
Craig Taff, 3720, West Laila Drive. The only thing I want to make sure of here is, I know we've done a lot of work to be able to televise and to have meetings and ongoing things in Kenner. This change, is it just to move it from another company back into our own employ, or our own people, or the city of Kenner now handling it instead of Tricaster? And is it going to affect anything that we've already done up to this point?
Thank you, Mr. Taff. Ms. Vannett?
Good morning, thank you for relaying your concern, Mr. Taff. These funds were originally allocated for an entirely new studio, and so we're simply taking the funds and using them to build a new website, which I think we can all agree that the city is in dire need of. We don't want to wait another 12 years to update or upgrade our website, and so this is just being a forward thinking, ensuring that we can keep up with maintenance of the new website and any upgrades that may be applicable, say, five years from now. Correct. Correct, so basically, instead of a brand-new TV studio, we're getting a new website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vannett. Seeing no other questions, motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Swarth, to close the public hearing. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Swarth, to approve. All councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed?
Motion passes, seven zero. Item 9 is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. Item 9A is summary ordinance number 13,085, an ordinance approving an amendment to the lease agreement between the city of Kenner and LCMC Health Holdings Incorporated.
Thank you, Fire Department. Motion by Councilmember Willmont, seconded by Councilmember Lahatt. Do we have any, Councilmember Willmont?
If we can just have somebody explain this one, especially the leasing of the property and so forth, where's it at?
Mayor Glazer, or...
I'll take it, if somebody wants some more camera time.
Some more details, if you could provide more details on what we're on the lease.
I'll take it if somebody wants.
Yes, Ms. Dufresne?
Michelle Dufresne, City Attorney's Office. This is the Greenwall Building that is on the same campus as Building C, Mayor's office. It's on the backside, facing the park area. It was originally leased to Red Cross, through the years, it's eventually gotten to LCMC, it was a 99-year lease. We now have about 40 years left on that land lease. We do not own the building at this time, we only own the land. At the end of the 99-year term, we, Kenner will get back all improvements, which will include the building. So the building was empty right now, it has some damage being fixed for this lease. It will allow Kenner to get out of Macy's and hopefully get the last department, which is code enforcement, because it's a very big department, to leave Kenner, I mean, leave Macy's and come back to Kenner and get away from that $65,000 a month lease, plus everything else associated. So the agreement was made with LCMC to allow us to lease this building for five years, and I'll give credit to Amy Vallow for negotiating the lease amount, and I feel like this is a good idea, and it obviously gets code enforcement back on campus, and most importantly, us out of Macy's.
What is the lease amount?
$3,000 a month. So $3,000 a month, we cover our own utilities, of course, it has parking, it will be great for code enforcement, and there's also a second floor, so if we have some stragglers that need to come in from another department, we can also put them there. But this is the last property that we could find to put code enforcement in, and we didn't have any properties within Kenner's holdings to hold such a large department.
Thank you for that explanation, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dufresne. Councilman Branigan?
How far are we into the 99-year lease?
We have about 40 years left, so...
Thank you.
We got a while.
Thank you. Also, I just, a point of clarification for Ms. Herring, the $3,000 is reimbursable by FEMA, correct?
Yes, so it's an eligible reimbursement expense. We're going to basically do a cost analysis, which it's pretty obvious, the reduction that we'll have and save from not having to pay Macy's.
Yes, and the goal would be to move in the short, or just as a council for administration, is to not, if we can move it before the five years into a permanent facility that we do not pay a lease payment for, then that would be the goal, correct? Yes, Councilman Branigan?
And the game plan is to have this done by...
So I know they're actively working in Greenwall, we asked the state for an extension at the temporary location of Macy's through December, but I think the goal is November.
Thanksgiving is the goal I've had in my head, so we, on pace to get out before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item 10 is opening of bids, we have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage, we have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 13,082, an ordinance authorizing the Kenner Police Department to hold a public auction on November 17, 2022 to sell surplus movable property, no longer needed for public purpose, and setting the terms and disposition of the proceeds from the sale.
Motion by Councilmember Lahatt, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Willmont?
Thank you. Chief, just if you will, just, can you give us an idea of the movable property that's going to be involved in this auction?
Yeah, these are about 30 old police units that have been sitting in the back lot through the supply chain issues, every part's been picked off of them, they're now just basically littered. So the only way we can alienate property is a government agency is through an auction. So these, this is going to be a, an auction that's held online. All the pictures of the vehicles are up online, if anybody's interested, some of them run, some of them don't, some of them have tires, some of them don't, but it's just alienating these vehicles.
And the auction date looks like is November 17, that's correct?
Right, November 17. And part of the requirements of the auction is to have the public hearing and certainly let the public know that we're alienating public property, but it's really of no use.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Dunn?
Thank you, President McKinley. What happens to the ones that's not sold? Because I look at the spreadsheet of what you all had, so what happens if you don't sell it in auction?
We can give them the District 1.
Thank you, but no thanks.
I defer to the City Attorney, but I believe at that point, we can salvage a scrap it, we can alienate it in a way that we see fit.
Okay.
Could we send them to Olden, Louisiana?
Matter of fact, we have to go pick some up from Olden.
Councilmember Swarth?
Mr. Mayor, can we add some of the other vehicles to this auction as well? Because we have some old fire trucks that are back there.
The city's going to have an auction coming in December.
We're in the process of scheduling one now.
Thank you, sir.
We just had so many in the back lot and whatnot that we're going first with a small amount, and then we'll probably have some more equipment in with the auction with the city as well.
I thought we had one big flea market, you know?
Great, thank you. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution approving a scoreboard larger than 150 square feet at Butch Dewey Playground, Field 2.
Motion by Councilmember Swarth, seconded by Councilmember Lahatt. Any comments? Okay, councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item thirteen B is a resolution temporarily suspending Council Rule Number Seven of the Rules of Organization, Business Order, and Procedure of the Council of the City of Kenner, and rescheduling the Kenner City Council meetings of September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, and rescheduling the Kenner City Council meeting of December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Brandigan. We can celebrate Christmas next year at, at the council meeting. That's exciting. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Council, opposed, nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item thirteen C is a resolution approving appointments to the City of Kenner Historic District Design Commission.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmont. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item thirteen D is a resolution appointing the members of the Alcoholic Beverage Permit Review Committee.
Motion by Councilmember Wilmont, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item fifteen is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item fifteen A is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seventy-one. An ordinance approving an agreement with HNO Investments LLC to provide grass-cutting services on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for the Department of Inspection and Code Enforcement.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Brandigan. Any comments? Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen B is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seventy-two. An ordinance approving change orders one through three, final, to the agreement with NOLA Painting and Finishing LLC dated September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, regarding the roofing at six twenty-four Williams Boulevard, increasing the agreement amount by five thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars for a total amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred seventeen dollars, and accepting the agreement as complete.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Any comments or questions? Nope, Councilman...
Councilman, we have someone...
Oh, I apologize. Mr. Morela?
Al Morela, forty-two sixty, East Layola Drive, Fifth District, fifty years. I'd like to get an explanation on why the increase, five thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morela. Mr. Glorioso?
Yeah, I was already prepared for that. No problem with that.
You don't have to speak so loud.
It's, it's unforeseen circumstances when he went to replace the roof. That roof has got three different levels on it. It's a flat roof, it's pitch roof, it's a normal shingle. When he got to the flat part, the underlayment was all rotten. So, there was just a lot of rotten material underneath it when he went to replace it. That's the different reason for the change order, the increase in cause.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Glorioso.
Y'all sure, y'all sure you want to leave this microphone, the volume on this microphone like this, when you up here?
If you could speak from your seat, sir.
You sure you wanna, you sure you want to leave it?
I'm over here. I can't control the volume from over here, Ms. Al. Just step back from the mic a little bit.
I just wanted to warn you beforehand.
And so, before you get up for the next one, it's the same reason on that one as well. It's some damaged underlayment material that they had to replace before they put the new roof on. We didn't want to cover up damaged stuff, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Glorioso. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seventy-three. An ordinance approving change order number one, final, to the agreement with NOLA Painting and Finishing LLC dated September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regarding the roofing at Rivertown Church, increasing the agreement amount by four hundred fifty dollars for a total amount of thirteen thousand three hundred sixteen dollars, and accepting the agreement as complete.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmont. Mr. Morela?
Al Morela, forty-two sixty, East Layola Drive, Fifth District, fifty years. Once again, an explanation for the increase.
I believe he already provided that explanation. Yes, that it was the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Al, it's the same reason.
Same thing, okay, just two items on the agenda. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're separate contracts, so they have to be voted on independently.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Al.
Thank you, Mr. Glorioso as well. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seventy-four. An ordinance ratifying the emergency purchase of mobile radios from Broadband Communications Incorporated in the amount of five thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents for the Kenner Fire Department.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Swarth. Any comments? Okay, councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen E is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seventy-five. An ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Department of Treasury for state and local government entities in an amount not to exceed five hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars for the Kenner Police Department.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Chief Conley?
Yeah, this is something that actually Mayor Glazer, when he was chief, procured through the state legislature. Senator Talbot has committed and appropriated five hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. Knowing that the department wanted to go to body-borne cameras, had to update some computer equipment due to software not being able to support new programs through the state. So, we're thankful to Senator Talbot for this money. But this is approving a cooperative endeavor agreement that will go back to the state once it's executed out of the mayor, and the money will be released. And I can speak on, on the next one, because it's similar circumstances. It's an appropriation by Representative Villio, which is gonna go towards replacing the computers and some of the radios and network systems that, that we have to use on the police department. But this is all free money, but these are the steps we have to do to, to accept it. So, this is all, this is all new money coming into the city.
Thank you, Chief Conley. Any other additional comments? Yes, Councilwoman Wilmont?
I'd, I'd just like to also mention, that's fantastic, Senator Talbot and Representative Villio for doing these, both of these things and getting money for the city of Kenner. Outstanding. So, I just wanted to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen F is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seventy-six. An ordinance approving an agreement with Louisiana Department of Treasury for state aid to local government entities in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Kenner Police Department.
Motion by Councilmember Brandigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. I believe the chief spoke about this one as well. This is additional funding. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seventy-seven. An ordinance authorizing the use of Louisiana State contract numbers four four zero 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 five four one seven, four four zero 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 one eight seven six one, and four four zero 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 two two zero five one, with vehicle parts and equipment incorporated, to furnish and install light bars and sirens, in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars for the Departments of Fleet Management, Police, and Fire.
Motion by Councilmember Brandigan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Can you please repeat those contract numbers? I'm just kidding. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen H is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seventy-eight. An ordinance authorizing a cost-per-copy lease agreement with U.S. Copy Incorporated for photocopy, fax, and printing equipment, maintenance, parts, labor, and supplies for a term of five years for the Kenner Police Department.
Motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Swarth. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seventy-nine. An ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Parish of Jefferson for construction of the Lake Town Boat Launch Rehab and Marsh Creation Project.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmember Lahat?
Yes, this is the Go Mesa Project that Dominic and Postado is instrumental in getting for the city of Kenner to rehab the entire boat launch, for redoing it. We're dredging out. We're also gonna build a rock jetty, which extends out beyond the launch to prevent, hopefully prevent the boat launch from filling up again with sediment to prevent people from utilizing their boats. We're also redoing the bathroom out there. Separate deal. I'm also getting the fish and pier repaired right now with Charles Alon. Couple of railings are off, so a lot of attention on Lake Town, which also has the treasure chest groundbreaking we had this week. So, this is for the Go Mesa Project. It's a great project, very much needed in my district, so very excited about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lahat. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eighty. An ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Polydine Incorporated for an agreement to provide polymer on an as-needed basis in accordance with seal bid number twenty-two dash sixty-six ninety, in an amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred dollars annually for the Department of Wastewater.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Swarth. Councilman Brandigan?
Is this a renewal of a contract? What did we spend on it last year?
Yes, so this is a normal contract we put out annually. Last year, we spent a hundred and seven thousand. There was a slight increase in this year's bid, so that's what the difference is for the one thirty-three.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herring. And Councilman, Brandigan, please don't steal my questions. I was gonna ask that, too. Just kidding. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item fifteen K is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eighty-one. An ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with East Bank Little League for use of baseball fields at Butch Dewey Playground.
Motion by Councilmember Swarth, seconded by Councilmember Brandigan. Councilmembers, any, oh, Councilmember Swarth?
I just got one question here. Natalie, I think we found this discrepancy the other day on the dumpsters. Or is the Little League or Chappelle wanting to help with the payment for the dumpsters at Butch Dewey?
The, sorry. There is currently not a monetary component in that first year of their payment. I mean, they're making payments, Chappelle is making payments towards their field use, but the majority of the agreement incorporates field improvements and maintenance, which does not include trash removal. However, we have had conversations with any of the organizations that we are currently in a cooperative endeavor or entering into a cooperative endeavor with, and they are of the understanding that over the next couple of years, that the city has the expectation for them to take over the entire facility completely. Right now, we have supervisors that are at these facilities, but the city does not have the resources, monetarily or for personnel, to maintain these sites. And so, as we enter these agreements, we will be having those conversations. Hey, be prepared that we're offloading this all to you, but there still will be a public benefit that comes back to the citizens of Kenner.
Right, I haven't had a chance to talk to you about Westgate Playground yet, because that dumpster there, that's...
Yes, sir, I'm working on them.
You're working on that one? Fantastic, thank you.
Yes, also, just a point of clarification. We're, this, the, we're discussing the East Bank Little League at Butch Dewey, so...
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Lahat?
Now, we talked about this a little, little bit a few weeks ago. The, the CEA with East Bank is for, strictly for Fields One, Three, and Four. Chappelle's out there. They're, they're obviously drafting a CEA right now for Field Two. And that was, the only thing I was worried about was reading the language. They will both be able to utilize the bathrooms out there. There won't be any type of fighting over that issue. We just want to make sure to prevent that type of thing from happening as the city goes forward with the CEA, CEA agreements.
That's correct, and we've had meetings with both parties to understand that they both utilize the complex, and they need to behave appropriately and be, be kind.
That's all I'm worried about. It's all a great idea. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Lahat. Councilmember Brandigan?
Ms. Newton, under, on the second page says deliverables, facility improvements. Is there a timeline on those facility improvements being done?
It's over, so, the way that this agreement is broken down is that they have to meet certain deliverables within the first five years of the agreement. If they don't meet those deliver, deliverables for improvements within the first five years, then we start to charge them a significant monetary amount for use of those fields.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilmont?
Ms. Newton, I just have a question regarding the actual, I guess, the playground itself, Butch Dewey Playground. Being that this is a CEA, and it's gonna be leased to other entities outside the city of Kenner, does it have any issues or any, any conflicts do you foresee in the future with Kenner bringing back its rec?
No, so we are working on our recreation plan. This actually, in my opinion, will enhance Kenner's recreation program by allowing these outside entities to make these improvements that the city cannot afford. The, the agreement also recognizes that when we host baseball at our other playgrounds, so, we'll host at the playgrounds that we can utilize post-storm, so we have a, a facility issue from that, that side of things. And then also, where's it gonna best serve citizens? So, we'll host sports at each playground where we can accommodate from a logistical perspective. But our Kenner residents will be able to play games on these fields, so they'll have a nice facility when the two teams come to meet and play their games. And in addition, this agreement in particular, and we've spoken, again, with the other agencies we currently have CEAs with, they are required to host coaches' clinics for us, as well as player clinics for us. So, these people have the expertise to offer that to our citizens and our residents, where, you know, kind of the private agency pays for them, our, our residents will not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to...
Mayor Glazer?
East Bank Little League's been using these fields now for over two years without any kind of agreement, without any kind of payment, any, they just, it was a muck-to-muck kind of agreement, and they've, they've been trying to get this for two years after, I, I know I've been talking with them for about a year now, you know, them trying to get something written that they actually can put some capital investment in these, these fields.
Thank you, Mayor Glazer. Councilmember Brandigan?
I'm glad to see that this is moving forward. I know that we have had a lot of discussions, and one of my main goals to get recreation back, and I think this is a move in the right direction. And I do know that in the payment section, where they are paying ten thousand a year for years two to five, that will be offset tremendously if they get the turf fields done, because turf in a field is eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand dollars, depending on the size of the field, maybe more. So, I think that it will put Kenner in a better position. If we can get all of the improvements at this facility, then it's gonna help, in other ways, steer travel ball tournaments to our city, which will enhance fill-up hotel rooms, restaurants. It will be a, a financial boom, a great impact for our city. So, thank you for getting this thing done.
Yes, Councilmember Wilmont?
Just, just a quick question on, how many years is it for?
Initial term is five years with, sorry, go through, um, it's five, an additional, if they put one million dollars into the facility, it's an additional ten-year renewal. And we have options to continue to renew. But the go, the goal is that we want to under, be, understand and be respectful that people are gonna put a significant monetary investment into something, then they should have a right to utilize that asset for several years. However, I feel like we have written into here that there will be a benefit coming back to the citizens of Kenner throughout the term, even a long-term agreement.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dunn?
Are you gonna utilize any other gems for this, any other playfields?
We hope that this is kind of the building block for other agreements that will be similar for other sports throughout the city. Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Brandigan?
And, and when you're talking about the investment that goes into this facility, I want the public to understand that if, if we, if, if an entity comes in, and they're spending a million dollars on our property, that is gonna end up being our property in the long run. It's a no-brainer to extend the term, because there's no way that an entity would come in, spend a million dollars for a five-year lease. That's totally ridiculous to even consider something like that. So, I'm glad that you have the, the information in here where they will be able to use it, and I think that would, should attract other entities... be able to use it. And I think that would, should attract other entities to other facilities in the future. And it puts us in a very, very good position. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brandigan. Councilmember LaHatt?
Yeah, I echo Councilman Brandigan's statements. The travel ball business is unbelievable. If we could have travel ball tournaments in Kenner, it's on the drive to Livingston Parish to watch my daughter play softball every weekend. I would love that. And I want to, we need to capture some of that. I saw how the Chappelle Field got built last year and what, when you have a field like that getting built and the stadiums, the fields around Kenner get better through these private entities, it causes more people to want to do the same thing. And they see how great the facilities are. They want to play there. Chappelle actually let plenty of other people use their field. They hosted a grammar school softball championship game there last year. It was phenomenal. And it's just, and then more people talk and other schools talk, I want this now too. So it's going to elevate a lot and it's going to make Kenner a lot better. It's going to make all the fields better. And a lot of people want to come here. And then we'll have the travel ball system start through all those different UTRIP and those organizations, which I want to try to tackle. So I'll be with George on that one hundred percent.
Okay. I just want to say thank you to the administration for jumping right in and working on these CEAs and moving the Recreation Department forward. And I also want to say, I want to see Councilwoman LaHatt's dog play, it sounded like you said, dog play softball.
Dog, daughter, sorry.
Oh, daughter, okay. I'll see your daughter too, but the dog, that would be really cool.
My dog's with a vet right now.
Okay, any additional comments? Okay, council members all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Council members opposed, say nay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen L is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eighty-three. An ordinance approving an agreement with Pivotal GR Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars.
Motion by Councilwoman Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Council members all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen...
I can't believe you didn't ask if this was a current contract, a renewal.
You're out of order. You were not recognized.
Item fifteen M is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eighty-four. An ordinance approving Amendment Number Two to the Agreement with Jansen Adjusters International LLC to assist in the preparation, presentation, and adjustment of all applicable claims for the loss and damage caused by Hurricane Ida, increasing the not-to-exceed amount from seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a new not-to-exceed amount of one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and amending the scope to include all City of Kenner properties and adjusters' travel time.
Motion by Councilwoman...
Madam Chairman, one moment, please. I've received a request for a one-meeting deferral on this item. I have a motion by Councilmember LaHatt, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, on a one-meeting deferral. Any discussion on the deferral? Seeing none, council members in favor of the deferral, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. Motion passes seven zero for a one-meeting deferral. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Beacon Air Conditioning, Heating, and Refrigeration Incorporated to furnish and install fire department headquarters, air handler upgrade in accordance with seal bid number twenty-two dash sixty-six ninety-five in the amount of twenty thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen B is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Christmas Village LLC to supply Christmas lights in accordance with seal bid number eleven dash sixty-six ninety-three in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Denny Exterminating Incorporated to provide pest control services in accordance with letter bid number twenty-two dash twenty dash twenty dash twenty-two dash twenty-two in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the response bid received from NOLA Painting and Finishing LLC to furnish and install roofing for Fire Station Three Seventy-Nine in accordance with letter bid twenty-two dash twenty twenty-one in the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen E is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid from Gov Connection Incorporated for solar winds software licenses in accordance with bid number twenty-two dash twenty-eight eighty-three in the amount of eighteen thousand eighty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents annually. Item sixteen F is an ordinance authorizing the use of State Contract Number four-four-zero-zero-two-one-nine-one-three with Barney's Incorporated to purchase twenty-two Smith and Wesson Model M&amp;P non-millimeter semi-automatic pistols and accessories in the amount of twenty thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen G is an ordinance authorizing the use of State Contract Number four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-one-nine-one-three with Barney's Incorporated to purchase one hundred and fifty Smith and Wesson Model M&amp;P non-millimeter semi-automatic pistols and accessories in the amount of eighty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen H is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with Jefferson Parish Economic Development Commission, JEDCO, for services related to increasing economic development in the City of Kenner. Item sixteen I is an ordinance approving change order number eight final to the agreement with Barriere Construction Company LLC dated November twentieth, two thousand seventeen, regarding the New Orleans Airport Connector Road, State Project Number H period zero-one-one-two-seven-six, Federal Aid Project Number H zero-one-one-two-seven-six, Kenner Public Works Project Number two thousand fourteen dash zero-zero-three dash A dash RB for an increase of forty-eight calendar days and accepting the project as complete for the Department of Public Works. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Yes, I just want to recognize our council clerk, Natalie. Her birthday is tomorrow, and she did not want to be recognized. Oh, it's today. I thought it was tomorrow. Well, then it's today. So let's all say happy birthday to Natalie throughout the day. So I hope you have a wonderful day, and hopefully this meeting won't be that much longer.
Thank you. Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and motions to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Morella, you can approach in three minutes, please.
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, fifty for fifty years. I want to respond to some comments made in here at the last meeting. I want to direct this response to you, Councilman Brandigan, concerning contracts, items on agendas from two years ago. First of all, let me start by saying this. That's how y'all conduct our business down here, you award contracts and then forget about them, and then wait for an opportune time to start asking questions about the spending concerning those contracts. Now, you asked where I was going with this. So let me explain it to you very simply. I think the investigators need to be investigated themselves. That's where I'm going with this. Now, I'd like to address this to the mayor concerning the no security, the lack of security in the Walmart on West Espinade. Now, this is becoming an administrative issue now, because I asked several months ago about the agreement that Walmart had with the City of Kenner when they set up shop here over twenty years ago. And they got lucrative tax breaks from this city. They got lucrative tax breaks probably from the state as well. And in return, they had to have stipulations. If one of those stipulations was to provide security in that store, then we need to hold their feet to the fire. Now, I'm not there as long as the employees. I'm in and out of that store. But I'm getting reports from people who work there. There are incidents taking place in that store that is not being reported. The police are not even being called to the store. So we need to get a hold of the agreement, if such an agreement even exists. And we need to look at this security for that store. And if they agree to this, then they, and if we don't have the manpower with the KPD, then they need to get them a private security patrol in that store. Now, this is a catastrophe waiting to happen. So something has to be done, and it has to be done now. And if they can, and I will say this about Walmart, a few years back, if they can bribe the Mexican government to tune the three million dollars to put some of their stores, extra stores on the fast track, they certainly can afford security in this store. Employees at risk, the people who shop there at risk, it shouldn't be like this.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Your time's up.
Anybody got any comments, any questions?
Oh, Councilman Brandigan?
Mr. Morella, you, I don't know what you're trying to accomplish. You said you're trying to make sure that, or you're trying to accomplish that. We are questioning things that happen. If you read the May seventh, two thousand twenty ordinance, all we, the council did, McKenney, Willmont, Carroll, Segura, Hayes, Brandigan, and Brennan, is give the administration, the mayor, to enter in a contract. And that has to be done for hurricane preparedness. Now, it doesn't say in here that we are looking at how much they're spending monthly. And the questions came up when we found out that they were spending seventy-eight thousand dollars a month for toilets. And I think that's ridiculous. And thirty-two million dollars was spent, and nothing was brought before that council. And I think that that's ridiculous. So I, have you spoken to anyone from the prior administration since July first, two thousand twenty-two, on this stuff, to bring this up?
Councilwoman McKenney, answer that?
Yes, you may answer.
No, I haven't, Councilman Brandigan. But I don't have to, because I have those agendas. I read those items into the record. And I want to say this to you. You are co-equal branch of government. You have a fiduciary responsibility to the people of Kenner, just like the administration does. That's my point. Now, next meeting, if you don't want to give me no more time, that's fine. Next meeting, three more minutes, and I'll continue this conversation as long as you want.
You can continue at every meeting. But the facts are that the prior administration did not send any expenses. They sent a list of expenses. And when I brought up the DRC contract spending three point four billion dollars last fall, the administration looked at each other like they had three heads. So you can bring it up every meeting. The facts are, we approved the contract to put, to be prepared for a hurricane. We should have put in the contract that you need to report to us monthly that you were spending seventy-eight thousand dollars a month on bathrooms.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Brandigan.
Next meeting, three more minutes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Morella. Mr. Hotard, if you can approach, introduce yourself. And your three minutes. Oh, I apologize, Councilwoman Brennan.
I just wanted to comment on the, the, it's like the pickup trucks and the bazillion dollars spent on that. It's got to be a prudent expenditure. And again, all we did was approve the contracts. To George's, pardon me, to Councilman Brandigan's point, that Zoom meeting, that meeting you keep referring to was a Zoom meeting. You weren't on the meeting. For a person who says he has no computer, I find it interesting that you were able to quote everything in the ordinance numbers for a person that doesn't have a computer. So it just, I guess we could talk about this every meeting and whatever, but I think you're trying to make something out of it more than what it really is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brennan. And I'm just going to make an additional comment just to clarify. We do have a fiduciary role. That's why we review the contracts and approve the contracts. But there's also a certain level of trust between the legislative and the executive branches, that they properly administer said contracts. And the bottom line is that we feel that that contract was improperly administered, not voted on and vetted through the council. So we did the right thing, and we can't, we don't necessarily believe and trust that that was the case of the former administration. Thank you. Mr. Hotard, three minutes.
Thank you. Matthew Hotard, sixty-six Red Oak Drive, and I am the president of the Kenner Firefighters Association, along with a fourteen-year veteran in the Kenner Fire Department. A couple of things. I said before, I would get up here and just give updates, being that we're here almost every meeting. The first is that we have two new trucks that we're putting in service, I think right after last meeting. It's a good thing to have. And right now, we are actively trying to find the equipment to properly outfit them within the department. I'd also like to acknowledge the retirement of our Assistant Chief, Pat Ardno. He has over, roughly, thirty-three years of service to our department. We're going to miss someone, I'd like to thank him for his service. We are also unfortunately losing a firefighter. We've talked about retention issues and some of the problems that not only the Fire Department, Police Department has with retention, but this is a little over a year firefighter, and he's not leaving the Fire Department to go after another Fire Department job. He's leaving to unfortunately go after a different career based solely on the fact that it's hard for him to afford to live on the salary of the Fire Department. With that being said, I would like to thank the mayor and his staff for publicly acknowledging the issues that our department has. I'd like to also thank them for making an effort to correct those in the immediate, and also acknowledging that this is a long-term problem that, from what he said, that this is going to be looked at and hopefully corrected by the administration. So on the behalf of the association, I'd like to say thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hotard. Mr. Teff, if you can approach, three minutes, please.
Greg Teff, thirty-seven twenty, West Loyola Drive. I just got a couple of things. One of them is, is that I'd like the administration to reconsider or consider at this point moving the meetings to after, between six and seven in the evenings, to give people that work an opportunity, if they want to attend the council, they may do so. One of the problems right now is nobody can be home by five, five-thirty, if you're working in New Orleans and you get off at four-thirty, five o'clock. It isn't going to happen. The other thing is, during these afternoon meetings, there's been very, very little participation from schools, et cetera, which is why it was changed this way in the first place. It was supposed to give students and schools the opportunity to, that were in, you know, looking into government, how the government works, to attend. And it also was to allow the seniors from these living centers to be able to attend. But again, that hasn't happened a lot. So I'm just asking that y'all look at it and maybe see if there is a between, you know, I'm saying between six and seven, that gives people, a lot of people time to get home, to be able to attend. The other thing I want to bring up in this, really, I wasn't going to say anything about this, but it's in response to Mr. Morella, what he said. I think what I took out of what he said was very simple. Yeah, y'all approved it at that point in time, but remember, I'm a businessman. And in business, if I approve something, I always followed up, because y'all had access to those records. In fact, even when this was all going on with the report, a lot of times, the CFO wasn't even asked to produce any reports. So all I'm saying is, I think is, when we, as a council, when you make a, an ordinance, sometimes it doesn't hurt to follow up and to check with the administration just to see what has taken place. And in reality, that is a checks and balance. That's all it is, just checks and balance. And that's really all I have to say. Because I don't have a leg on this. I've said my piece in the past, and that's all, I'm just saying, pointing out why I think what Mr. Morella is saying is, what he's really trying to get to is that there is follow-up that could have been made if you wanted to do it. And you had access to the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. I just want to say that, I just want to say that the council investigation is follow-up, actually, to the information that we did here. So we are doing the follow-up as a part of a council investigation. And in your response to the meetings and the number of participants, actually, we got a request from Kenner Discovery for four hundred students to attend our meetings and un... and unfortunately, in our current facilities, four hundred students will not fit in our facilities, especially, I'm sure the fire chief would say that that's a fire issue as well. So, there is definitely interest in schools coming back, and I think that moving the meetings, or the meetings at this current, at this time, and is, is actually a good thing, and I think that we're not going, the council will not consider moving it. Mayor Glazer, I know you had a comment, I thought you had a comment.
No, I was going to speak at the end about something tomorrow.
Okay, yes. Councilman Branigan and Councilman Wilmont.
Well, Mr. Taft, on the moving of the meetings, back when we moved the meetings to five-thirty and eleven o'clock on that Friday, it was to accommodate people that would have to work at night, that might want to come to a meeting, that was one of the things. On the other issue that Mr. Morella is bringing up, last year, last fall, when all of the truck purchases started to surface, when the first floor surfaced at two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, it caused me to start asking questions, and it ruffled the feathers of the administration. And I can remember the mayor at that time saying, "Oh, this is all political, and all you're doing is questioning these trucks, and what about the other five-point-one million that we spent?" And at that time, said, "Send every expense." And that's when the finance department sent, started sending us monthly the expenses, and that's when the questions started popping up. But the expenses, when they were sent to us, were for our company and what it did. And that's the way to do it. But when I questioned DRC and three-point-four million dollars spent on restrooms and laundry, like I said, they looked at each other like they didn't know what was going on, not Ms. Harry. Okay? Let's make sure we're clear on that. The mayor and the CAO looked at each other like, "We don't know what he's talking about." And it was in black and white on the thing. What I'm saying is that, I understand it's our responsibility to watch the money, but when an administration is not providing the data from the top of the administration, that caused the problem, and it will not happen again.
Councilman Wilmont?
And this, I, I don't know, I'm going to mention it, but it doesn't, it, I guess it needs correcting, but I know Mr. Al mentioned a few minutes ago, and he, he mentioned it before at previous meetings, he, he refers to us as having co-equal branches of government. Co-equal. Think about it. It's not true. It's just simply not true. I mean, Kenner, we have our charter, the parish has his charter, the state has its constitution, the federal government has its constitution. So, all these different forms of policies that we have, that we follow, it, it, it may be that the administration have, has more power over a particular issue than the council, in, in one form, and in another form, it might be that the council does have more power than the administration. So, I don't know where the co-equal branches, we do have branches of government, there's three branches of government in each layer, and those different branches make up our government as, as a democracy. So, I just mentioned that, it's not co-equal necessary specifically on some of these issues, so I'll just mention it for correction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilmont. Any additional, okay, Mr. Brown, please approach and have, state your name and your address in three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Richard Brown, Sessions Lane in Kenner, which is in Westwood subdivision. Three things quickly. First off, I personally would like to see the council go back to evening meetings, or at a minimum, make the Thursday meeting a little bit later, instead of five-thirty, make it six o'clock or a little later. Personally, I prefer them. Second point I want to make is that, that I've been a resident of Westwood subdivision for twenty-five years now. On October 30th, we're having our Fall Festival for Holly Heights, Westwood, and Chateau Terrace subdivisions. And those are all right together, and on nextdoor.com, they're all under Holly Heights, even though it's technically three subdivisions. We're having a Fall Festival at the end of, of October, the council approved our, our public gathering permit tonight or today. We appreciate it, thank you very much. Many council members and the mayor and the chief are helping with it. Melody Lawson, who has been spearheading this issue, has signed up to speak behind me, and I'm going to let her explain to you what's going on, and to thank the people who have been participating. And we've received a lot of help from the city, from our councilmen especially. And by the way, Melody has also spearheaded the cleanup effort and to decorate our subdivision entrance. The last thing I want to comment on is, I feel like I need to respond further to my friend Al Morella, and I do consider Al a friend, even though sometimes we disagree. This topic has come up before and came up again tonight. I think Mr. Morella does not understand the, the Louisiana Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness Act. He keeps saying we have three co-equal branches of government, and the council has to approve what the mayor does. For the most part, yes, except when we're under a state of emergency. When we are under a declared emergency by the governor and the mayor, state law, not, not our charter, state law, gives the mayor extraordinary powers. He can spend money any way he wants to, on anything he wants to spend it on, without council approval. This co-equal branches of government goes out the window when we're in a state of emergency. And the mayor has extraordinary powers, and so does the parish president. The mayor can make expenditures that the council has no knowledge of, there's nothing the council can do about it, the mayor can exceed the budget, he can bust the budget, he can take money that's supposed to be for the Fire Department and use it for sewer or whatever. He has unbelievable powers during a state of emergency, and I think that's what happened here. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? And by the way, I'll give Mr. Morella a citation to the state law that, that gives the mayor these powers. And Mr. Wilmont, thank you for, for the, helping to clarify this two or three times in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any, okay, great, thank you. Ms. Lawson, if you can approach and share your address in three minutes, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melody Lawson. My address is 841 Ronson Drive, District Four. I just wanted to come here to extend my gratitudes to all of you. Councilman Branigan has been absolutely instrumental in getting our community back together. I came up with this harebrained idea a few months ago. I've been a lifelong resident of Kenner, but I've only lived in that particular neighborhood for about a year, and I have small kids, and I noticed, just walking the neighborhood, there were lots of others as well. And so, the community engagement has been phenomenal. People have, people are coming to our house daily now, they're dropping off candy, and their kids are meeting kids, and it's exactly what we wanted. Our community pumpkin patch is so cute, and the kids look, they look forward to it every morning. So, I reached out personally to the administration, several of the council members, Chief Morris, Chief Conley, and we truly appreciate it. So, be sure, if you can, to bring your kids out, October 30th, from four to seven, it's in Megas Park. Everything is completely free, there will be inflatables, there will be good music, kids can go trick-or-treating, we'll have food, and so it'll be a good time. All right? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Councilman Branigan?
Melody, I just want to thank you for bringing the pride back to those three subdivisions, because without you being instrumental and getting things done, back to the first cleanup day that we had, you know, everything has just, it's exceeded the expectations. It's very important for our residents to take pride in their community. We had a guy out cleaning the Chateau, Chateau Boulevard by Walgreens, where a couple of the neighbors are not cleaning their stuff up. So, I just want to thank you for taking that bull by the horns and running with it, because it wouldn't be the way it is if it wasn't for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Branigan. I also want to thank Ms. Lawson, and thank you for your, all your efforts in organizing that neighborhood organization. And also, you know, I started my neighborhood organization, and I think it's so important to get, have pride in your neighborhoods, and also, you know, make all the residents realize that it's their community, and if they want livable and safe neighborhoods, they're the key to that. So, I think doing these events, getting to know your neighbors, that's what's going to make Kenner different from every other area that we live in, that we, you know, that lives in this area, and attract residents and new people in the area. So, thank you very much for all your efforts. Okay, Ms. Alessandro?
Stacy Alessandro, Fourth District, Kenner, almost thirty years. Couple of things, I wanted to first talk about item 15M. I know you guys deferred it for one meeting, I'm very happy about that. I've kind of decided I wasn't even going to talk anymore about the hurricane recovery because I'm so disappointed in the way the Alvendia contract went, and despite a lot of efforts from a lot of people, we weren't able to get anything done on that. So, I really was just going to let it go, but I'm here, and I can't let this go, I'm, I know it's going to come up, and I'll speak at the appropriate time, but I just want to say I am absolutely opposed to this contract increase. And I'll speak more on that at the appropriate time, but I am a hundred percent against it for multiple reasons. Second thing I want to talk about is talking about the city's social media page. I'd, I'd like to request that it become a little more inclusive on who we acknowledge. I know October is Hispanic Heritage Month, and we've had eight posts in the last couple of weeks on that, almost, almost daily. But Italian-American Heritage Month is also October, and I haven't seen a single post on that. Italian-American Heritage and Cultural Month is celebrated by proclamation of the President and Congress in the United States to honor the achievements and contributions of Italian immigrants and their descendants living in the United States. There are over twenty-six million Americans of Italian descent currently in the U.S., making up America's seventh-largest ethnic group. The Heritage Month is in October to coincide with Columbus Day, another day that we did not acknowledge on social media. Columbus Day, there was not a peep about Columbus Day, and that is a national holiday, and it's celebrated on October 12th. So, I'm here to let the public know that, you know, that was a thing as well that should be celebrated. Also, Fire Prevention Month was October, week, was October 9th through October 15th. We didn't have a post on that. I wish we would have, and I wish we would have highlighted some of our heroes, our first responders, our, our firemen, firewomen, our KPD doesn't get acknowledged. I mean, Fourth of July, we get one day. I hope when July comes around, we're going to get a post today on our heroes right here in Kenner. So, you know, I'm great, it's great to acknowledge, you know, different things that are happening, but I wish that we would have more inclusive things and that more people would be recognized. But, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alessandro. I'd like to recognize Chief Conley.
Yeah, I just want to thank the council and the mayor for coming this morning to support the graduation of the Police Academy Class Number Twenty. We graduated eleven young men and women, six, my time's up?
Yes.
Six to, are coming to Kenner, four, or five were for other agencies, have been allowed to show support. The mayor spoke, US Congressman Steve Scalise attended, and he spoke. So, you know, it's hard to get these applicants in, as was mentioned with the Fire Department. We're fortunate that we will have six young men and women hitting the streets Monday morning, starting the field training program. We will start another academy on November 7th to try to get another eleven or twelve officers out on the streets. But it's just, you know, as, as Chief Morris and the mayor mentioned, it's a, it's arduous task getting young people interested in these career paths, but I, I think we're coming, we're coming around full circle. But thank you for your support.
Thank you, Chief Conley. Chief Morris?
Yes, I just wanted to touch on a few things real quick. As Driver Hotard stated, we did put the two new fire apparatus in service on the streets of Kenner this past, well, since the last meeting, the last couple, three weeks, put new, the two new fire trucks in service. We did have in the last six weeks, two of our members that were tenured members, twenty-eight years, and I think thirty-three and a half years, to retire. We had two guys resign, unfortunately, two young guys, one, and they both resigned for the salary issues. We had three guys that refused to take the job as firefighters because of the low salary issues. This administration has, has made efforts, and we discussed, we got into discussions about raising dedicated funding for the fire service, so we are moving in that direction with this also. And just last month, with the hurricane in Florida, the State Fire Marshal requested standing-up USO teams, and I sent that to the mayor for us, you know, they wanted teams to attend, but we were short on one particular item, that was fire equipment. All the fire equipment that you send down on deployments like that has to be NFPA compliant, and only the two new fire trucks that we bought are NFPA compliant. Well, I'm sorry, we have two other ones, but they're like twelve years old, they're at the end of their lives on that. So, we do, we do need additional funding for our equipment, our stations, and more importantly, our, our young men and women that risk their lives every day for the community. And this administration is making every effort for us to get that done, and it won't happen overnight. We hadn't, we didn't get to this point overnight, and we're not going to resolve it overnight. So, we are making those efforts forward to move the city and this department forward. And with that being said, the young, the gentleman behind me, the assistant chiefs and stuff, we are committed to bringing one of the best-class rated fire departments in the state of Louisiana, and with their efforts and moving forward, that's our goal within the next year. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mayor Glazer?
Sorry. Also, not to, let me hear you, not to try to outdo Ms. Lawson back there with her little get-together, "Bro, are you having a movie?" Tomorrow night is the city's trunk-or-treat event at Musburger Lino Playground, beginning at five o'clock. It's from five to seven, and after that, we're going to have a Disney movie that I've never heard of in my life before. It's about a family with magical powers, I was told. Encanto, something like that? I think I pronounced it. But that's tomorrow, for everybody who wants to go out free, come, we bagged a lot of candy this week, is all I can say. And also, Stacy and Mr. Richard Brown, 15M, the one that was deferred tonight. City Attorney came in my office and asked if I want to sign it, because it's under emergency declaration when it was done. And I made the promise in one of the first council meetings, that absolutely not, if it's something that was done under emergency that needs, that would normally be approved by a council, it'll be coming in front of the council. So, no one would have ever, never heard of, about that, you know, if I signed it in my office and sent it on its way, and we, we paid some invoices. Check y'all emails, you got all the invoices sent to you during this meeting. So, why the increase is needed, because this is once again, work that was done prior to us sitting in these seats. So, that's it for me. Hope to see y'all at Musburger Lino tomorrow.
Yes, and we also, we should probably have an, an Italian version of the, the cartoon as well, I think Disney has one as well. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
All right. You didn't do the hammer, run it over. You didn't do the thing. And now I can get up. Thank you. Dog, I can see my dog playing.
Oh, I know, I was very impressed.
Like, what?
I was very impressed that your dog plays softball.
It's for the softball.
Yeah. Someone to get the door.
Yeah.